Good evening and welcome to the June 23rd, 2014 meeting of the Florissant City Council. Before we begin, anyone who wishes to speak in the hearing from public citizens portion of the meeting should complete a speaker's card located on the table next to the entrance to the chambers. Item number one, pledge of allegiance. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay. Hernandez is absent. Lee? Jones?
Here.
Egan?
Here.
Caputa?
Here.
Shildroth?
Here.
Henke?
Here.
Pagano?
Schmidt?
Let the record reflect that there is in fact a quorum this evening. Item number three, approval of the minutes. Mr. Henke moves to approve the minutes of the meeting executive session of June 9th, 2014, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number four, proclamations. Mayor, would you make your first proclamation, please?
Yes, sir. Please have a walk-in.
Security.
Whereas McClure North High School is one of five high schools in the city of Florissant. Whereas McClure North Girls Track Team won the 2014 Class Four State Championship on Saturday, May 31st, 2014, in Jefferson City, Missouri. And whereas this is the first time in the school's history that a girls' track team has won the state championship. Whereas. Whereas McClure North scored 65 points to win the Class Four Meet. Whereas the members of the McClure North Stars Girls Track Team are Jasmine Barge, Rachel Culberson, Metcha Ala Woods, Sidney Rogers, Demetria Anderson, Jayla Riggins, Kiana Harvey, and Michaela Ostel. Sorry if I mispronounced all of your names. Whereas the team and coach, Mr. Sheldon Webster, displayed exemplary commitment and personal discipline through the 2013-2014 season and in preparation for the state championship. Now therefore, I, Thomas P. Schneider, Mayor of the City of Florissant, Missouri, do hereby congratulate McClure North High School on winning the 2014 Class Four State Championship.
Coach? Can you join me, coaches? This is a great accomplishment for you and your team and for your school and for our community. We're very proud of you guys. When I asked you to come in, I asked the swim team to come in. That's because I was at the Florissant Fish Meet earlier this evening and we had a swim meet against Delwood. Our swim team competes with Hazelwood, Ferguson, and Balfont Neighbors also. But you guys compete with the whole state. And you guys, first time that you've won the girls' state track championship. Coach, tell me what you guys are doing different this year.
Uh, we didn't do anything different this year. That's the key, is we've been doing it this way for the last three or four years and it finally just came together. And the key to winning the state meet was to get to the state meet and not do anything different than you've been doing for the last four years. And it's just, it's a tribute to how hard the ladies worked. It's a tribute to being surrounded by supporting staff at school, great assistant coaches, and a little bit of luck. We stayed healthy. There's always a little bit of luck, so nothing magical.
Tell us about your athletes and their specialties and the events that they have performed.
Uh, we have eight athletes that we took to the state meet. In individual events, Jasmine Barge was the 4A state champion in the 100-meter hurdles and the 300 hurdles in which she set a state record that had stood for several years. Rachel Culberson, one of our three seniors there at the end, was the runner-up in the 400-meter dash. She ran on our state championship 4x2. She-
Next to her is Michaela, or we call her Mickey Woods. Mickey ran on our state championship 4x4.
Mickey ran, she finished seventh in the open 400 meter, and she ran on our 4x1, which finished second. And she did all this the last two weeks of the season with a stress fracture in a toe on her foot, which is why she's wearing that fancy boot there. Next to her is our third senior. There, she's got, I guess she won the lottery, she gets to hold the actual trophy. That's Michaela Ostel. And Michaela ran on both our 4x2 and our 4x4. She got us through prelims in the 4x4 and she ran on the 4x2 that was state champion. So she's another senior who has a state championship under her belt. Next to her is Demetria Anderson. Demetria was fifth in the, fourth in the 100 hurdles, sorry. So she was upset about the fourth, so. She's come a long way. She may be, we have two or three athletes that we would rank as maybe our most improved, and Demetria was certainly one of them. She was fourth in the open 100 hurdles, she was seventh in the 300 hurdles, and she ran a leg on our second place 4x100 relay. Okay? It's also worth noting at this point that as we come to Jasmine, Jasmine was named first team All-Metro as hurdlers. And third team, Rachel was named third team in the middle distances for her performances in the open four. And Demetria was named third team in multiple events because she ran both relays and the open hurdles. So we have three All-Metro athletes among these eight athletes here. We get to the shorter end of our lineup here. Jayla Riggins. Jayla's a sophomore. Jayla ran the leadoff on our 4x1, which was second this year, and she was an individual qualifier in the long jump. Next to Jayla is Sidney Rogers, a huge surprise. Sidney, we put her on as an alternate to get through on prelim day on the 4x4, and she was a 61 second quarter modern, and she popped a 57. So we left her on the next day. And so, as a freshman, she's a state champion. And last but certainly not least, a real stalwart on our relay, somebody I could always go to and count on. Kiana Harvey is a junior. And Kiana ran on our state champion 4x2. She let it off. She ran the anchor on the second place 4x1, and she ran a variety of other legs on relays for us this year. And next year will be her year in the opens, but she was a big asset in the relays this year. So these ladies did a fantastic job. No egos amongst them. They accepted their roles. They worked hard. They had some issues a few weeks towards the end of the season where they had to make some tough decisions. They did the right thing, and we won beside it. And so these are kids of real character, and it was a great, great moment for me to get to work with them, to see them this successful, and to work with some great assistant coaches. Dave Castrup, Coach. Coach Castrup is our hurdles coach. He's had state champions in the hurdles for the last three years, so he's one of the better ones in the state. Renee Scott Kane, who is our jumps coach. And Renee and Dave are the ones that got to hear a lot of the things that the girls never heard me say, because I kind of got it out in their direction, and then with them, I was all controlled and calm. And Coach Joe Gresham. Coach G is a big asset. He's new to us this year. And lastly, Coach, well, it is Coach. Coach Smith, our A.D., who has pretty much allowed me to do the things I need to do and trusted my judgment and given us the things that we needed. And that's a very important thing. Last but not least, because I owe it to her, because she's the one that gets a lot of what nobody hears or sees, my wife, who's put up with this for 28 years. And so, thanks. And some great parents, some great families. If you have, if you've done any kind of coaching in Corey League, high school, anything, I used to have, I had a friend who told me once, he said, "The coach's dream is a team of orphans." Not in this case. I never, ever, in the last three years, I've never had a parent question my judgment. I've never had a parent challenge. I've never had a parent, you know, why, it's just, you know, we've had some great parents, and that's, in our line of work, that's very unusual. So everything came together. We were very, very lucky, very fortunate, very blessed, and our plan is to do it again next year.
Well, we're very proud of you, Coach, and all your athletes. North County sports teams have gained respect, men and women's sports throughout the state, and now we can add women's track to that list. So congratulations. Let's get a photo op up here.
And there are no hearing from citizens this evening. Item number six is communications. There are no communications this evening. Item number seven, public hearings. Public hearing number 1406015.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Section 405-135 of the Florissant zoning code, the zoning ordinance, as amended, that a public hearing will be held in the City Council of the City of Florissant, St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55, Route Saint Francois, on Monday, June 23rd, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. on the following proposition. To rezone from a R4 zoning district to a B5 planned commercial district for S&amp;H Foods DBA Culvers to allow for the construction of a new sit-down, carry-out, and drive-through restaurant for the property located at 955 North Highway 67. Citizens and parties of interest will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TD8395142.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present? Good evening. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
I'm Ross Hansen with Archer Elgin Engineering, stepping in for Cameron Swice, who wasn't able to make it tonight.
Jay Campbell, Campbell Construction, 810 Swan Drive, McQuanigo, Wisconsin.
Gary Beiris, Culvers, 840 West Sunset Drive, Waukesha, Wisconsin.
Thank you, gentlemen. Let's go ahead and proceed with your presentation to the council.
What we're proposing is to construct a Culvers restaurant on the corner of Lindbergh and St. Ferdinand Street. It's formerly a car dealership. I don't know anything. Okay. Could you, can you hear better?
Yeah, you can actually take it out if you'd like.
We're proposing to construct a Culvers restaurant at the corner of St. Ferdinand Street and Lindbergh Boulevard, which is currently a vacant car lot. You want to add anything? I'm just here to take questions if there's anything engineering-wise.
I guess I would just add, if the council has any specific questions that they'd like for the Culvers operation, if you're unfamiliar with any of it, would you like any type of kind of rundown on what a Culvers is and their hours of operation, or?
That'd be appreciated.
All right. Well, hopefully, most of you are familiar with Culvers restaurants and you've had their food before. Pretty excited to bring them to the city of Florissant. Mr. Gary Beiris and his wife Jill, who couldn't be here with us today, will be the primary owners of this location. This will be their fifth location. They have two other locations in the state of Missouri and two in the state of Wisconsin. I shared with the group last time, literally, this is the first employee of Culvers back, you want me to say what year? Okay. So literally, I mean, your city couldn't be more fortunate to have Mr. and Mrs. Beiris coming into your community to run a Culvers restaurant. It's fast food, fresh, which, so you, everything's made fresh to order. Typical hours of operation are 10:00 in the morning until 10:30 at night. We asked for a little bit longer duration than that when we were in front of the council a couple of weeks ago, because final hours of operation will be determined later. But it's a sit-down restaurant with roughly, we're still working on the final dining room layout, but roughly 95 inside seats, 65 outside seats. Drive-through restaurant, which is one of the reasons that we're here, for the B5 zoning. 65 parking stalls. You know, Culvers gets very involved with the community. I'm sure Gary was probably chomping at the bit when he heard five high schools and saw the team here who won the state, and I guarantee you, his mind was already clicking at how he can help be involved in the community, not just on the school level, but, you know, Culvers is a great addition. Obviously, it's going to bring jobs, bring opportunities. But in addition to that, historically, Culvers just gets very involved in the community from every aspect of the community, and really dives in and becomes part of the local community, which I think is really one of the things that sets them apart, besides the quality of food, quality of service, everything's made fresh to order. Cleanliness, there is no other restaurant chain, of course, I'm biased, but I, there truly is no other restaurant chain that is maintained from the building aspect as well as Culvers, from a cleanliness aspect, you know, and as well as the quality aspect. And of course, my opinion is biased, but I think that's pretty accurate statements. So that's a brief rundown of what Culvers is.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I think you already answered all my questions. I was going to ask how many you have in this state and other states, but you guys already knocked that out, or, thanks?
Mr. Henke.
Yes, as a councilperson for Ward 6, which is where you'll be located, I think your Culvers restaurant's going to be a perfect fit for that lot that exists now. I think everyone in the council knows where they're at, and I couldn't be more excited. Best of luck to you guys, and I strongly support your venture.
Mr. Lee.
Yeah, I just want to say that the Culvers location has probably been one of the biggest anticipated secrets. Everybody was waiting, everybody's, more buzz about Culvers, when's it coming and where's it going to be? And it was kind of a bad-kept secret towards the last several months, but everybody's glad to have you here, and we're looking forward to you. I think it'll be a great location for you, and thank you for coming for Florissant. So we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We're very excited to-
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to take the opportunity to comment at this public hearing? If you would be so kind as to state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name's Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane. Florissant, Ward 4. I'm excited to see what Culvers comes in here. I go to Culvers at least twice a month, usually the Big Ben store or the same part of the Harvester store, and it'll be a good addition. But I was wondering, is it going to be the whole used car lot, or is there going to be a section of it?
What we have right here is the existing building to the car dealership, and this is the parking lot where they have all the cars displayed right now. Did he have his microphone?
Yep.
And so the site will wind up being pretty much the entire parking lot area of what exists here.
I wasn't sure if it was going to be, have to be subdivided or anything. And my second question is, I don't know if anybody's mentioned this, but we have an electric signal there at St. Ferdinand and Highway 67 and Lindbergh, and there's no left-turn arrow there. There's a left-turn arrow that just flashes all the time, and there's no left-turn south, left-turn out of the park or into the park, or, I mean, to make a left turn if you're going north on St. Ferdinand. And so if there are people coming out of Culvers, going straight ahead, it's going to deter people, it's going to make it hard for people to make a left turn. And I was just wondering if anybody's checked with the state of Missouri about, you know, doing something with that left-turn signal, which would be very convenient, because I've even noticed that on busy days at the park, I'm sitting there waiting to make a left-turn on Florissant Road on Lindbergh, and there's cars coming out of St. Ferdinand Park.
I can answer that.
And you've got to wait for them to clear out, but there's not that many. But I imagine the Culvers is going to be pretty busy, and I know because butter burgers are great. Anyway, so I would just, that's my only questions I have.
Mayor Schneider.
Yeah, in answer to that question, the city engineer, Tim Barrett, and I have been discussing those contingencies with the state highway department and the county highway department, because that, St. Ferdinand is maintained by the county and that intersects with Lindbergh, maintained by the state.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. Yeah, that was one of the questions I was going to ask about the stoplight, so. Also, I have a couple of technical questions, and I don't think these gentlemen have that, and I'm not sure if Mr. Huston might have the answers either. I understand from staff report, this is a zoned residential piece of property. Are we going to have to rezone this for the B5?
Yes.
Okay, so that will be at a future date?
No, well, that's part of the B5 ordinance, constitutes a rezoning.
Okay. So the rezoning is actually part of this?
Correct.
Second thing I have is, since they're not using the entire lot, are we going to have to subdivide this piece of property?
It's my understanding that they are.
Okay.
Again, I don't know quite where they're going with, they wouldn't have to subdivide it unless, of course, they're only purchasing part of it.
Right.
Don't know the answer to that, Mark.
Okay. Are you purchasing the piece of property, or are you leasing the piece of property? Is this going to be, you're going to have to sub-
We're in the middle of the subdivision process right now, and the seller of the property is subdividing it, and what we would be doing is just purchasing, I think it's 1.17.
Yeah, whatever the piece of property is, you're, so you are planning on purchasing that piece of property and then what's-
Correct, yes.
Okay. So that process is in the works, so.
Yes.
In order to pass this B5 in future meetings, are we going to need that subdivision, or can we do this without doing the subdivision first?
You could do that without it, and we can make that a contingent.
Contingent, yeah, that's what I was, okay. Yeah, I think I would definitely want to make it a contingent if not just hold this up until we get the subdivision. I guess one other question I have is, with the existing lots, with the existing building staying, it looks like according to your plans, there's going to be a cross-access opening into that, where that existing building is. Am I looking at that correct, that you are going to have cross-access easement, either for you and for the existing building?
There will be, there will be a cross-access easement across, and it'll allow us, Culvers, to use this existing entrance that's out in front of the car dealership now.
And will they be conversely the other way, to use, they'll let that existing-
That's correct.
-property, some future tenant to use Culvers as an exit through cross-
To get through the-
So is that cross-access agreement going to be drawn up with the owner?
Do you know the-
And will that be made part of our record?
Status on that.
Okay.
Has it been drawn up already?
Okay, so it is, so we have it already? I say "we," I mean, the city has that cross-access agreement? Okay. I think that's all I have for right now.
Thank you. Mr. Caputa.
Thank you, Mr. President. How are you gentlemen doing this evening? Welcome to Florissant. I've been around Culvers. My son played hockey. We traveled up north through Wisconsin, Minnesota, Illinois, Indiana, all the time, and that was one of our major stops, was Culvers on the way up to wherever we were going. I have to agree with Mr. O'Donnell, butter burgers are pretty good, so. I do have one question. From our staff analysis, the building is not in compliance with the masonry ordinance, and instead, the petitioner proposes consideration of modern materials. What are your other plans for the building? I mean, the structure? I mean, other than masonry, what do you guys use on other buildings? Do you use ephesus?
Yeah, this building is also, it'll be totally comprised of a combination of cementous siding, cultured stone, and ephesus is typical, and that's, you know, part of the Culvers national brand, prototypical restaurant, that, you know, we do want to maintain that for national branding reasons.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. I do have one other thing. Is it possible for us to get color renderings of your elevations?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Schneider.
Yeah, again, I personally welcomed you a few minutes ago, but on behalf of the citizens of Florissant, I think I can confidently say, "Welcome." This was at the top of our list, one of the restaurants, one of the amenities that citizens were asking for, including- were asking for, including my son Zach, who's visits from the Navy. And he said, after I got elected mayor, he said, Dad, you have to get a Culvers. So I'm sure glad you guys are coming and he'll be coming home on leave, so maybe you guys will be a little bit more on your way by the time he gets home. Thanks a lot for investing in Florissant.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment at this public hearing at this time? Seeing none, Mr. Shildroff moves to close the meeting, seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? No. Meeting's closed. Public hearing's closed. Next item on the agenda, old business, second readings. Bill number 9003. Mr. Lee moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Henke. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing an appropriation of $144,000 from the capital improvement fund to account number 0354 sidewalk repair for the purpose of reducing the backlog of sidewalk
Second reading. Mr., I will move for a third reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor? Or I need to pull the council.
No, all in favor.
Pull the council, please.
No, all in favor.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $144,000 from the capital improvement fund to account number 0354 sidewalk repair for the purpose of reducing the backlog of sidewalk repairs.
Before a third reading, final reading vote is taken on this measure, would anyone in the audience like to speak on it? Please state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
1281 Graham Road. On this particular bill, this is $144,000. The memo from Mr. Barrett and Lou Gerald's indicates that we have approximately $348,000 in sidewalks. Looking at the quarterly ending February 28 report, we're doing quite well in terms of some of the funding and proceeds. I'd like to see this thing, this bill introduced with an amount of $348,000 and get it done now. On behalf of the city, I've seen a lot of dumb expenditures. This is one good one. It puts people back to work, improves our neighborhoods, and get it done this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, will you please poll the council for the final vote?
Amanda Zepson, Lee? Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano? Schmidt?
Motion carries and bill number 9003 becomes ordinance 8051. Bill number 9004, Mr. Caputa makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $424,500 from the capital improvement fund to account number 0361 capital additions for vehicle replacement for the public works department.
Mr. Schmidt makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $424,500 from the capital improvement fund to account number 0361 capital additions for the vehicle replacement of public works
And prior to the final vote, anyone in the audience want to make a comment on this
Not messing our trucks. Back in November, the city council, Chart Two, Lindbergh, voted against this, nine, all nine. Tonight, I'd like to see the vote come out. What's the difference between last November and now? Is it availability of money or changing city council? I challenge you 20 years to stand there and do it. We got election 13579 next year. I'm absolutely appalled. Just been born on my city council, you, the members. Back in November, nine- Is zero against this. And now we have it on tonight. Once again, for the general public, you know, it's called the power of one. I may be the only person who cares, but I'm going to speak about this and I speak against it. We voted our sidewalks down, but we can have new trucks for our employees. Why don't we do both? No one even addressed the concrete issue of sidewalks. I blame my leadership, the city council. This is appalling to me as a city and a community. I'm disappointed. Now I'll watch the vote. I know the vote.
Mr. Lee.
Yeah, we had received a correspondence from the mayor's office regarding amendments to this bill and I, no one's offered the amendments, so I'm going to, I can still amend, Mr. Hustle, right? We haven't voted. So I'm going to offer an amendment to the bill that would remove the pickup truck and would also add the appropriation of $9,000 for the handicap accessible vehicle.
Mr. Shildroff. Do I need a voice vote? Please, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The amended bill stands. Ms. Pagano.
I would just, can I answer Mr. Engelmeier now why I'm going to vote the way I'm going to or should I wait till my vote?
You're certainly entitled to come to the show. The bill itself, which may also obviously explain to Mr. Engelmeier what your intentions are.
Okay. Mr. Engelmeier, at the budget session, when we asked for information on these vehicles, it was not provided in a timely manner. Since that time, I have been to the street department twice, I've been to the parks department once, and I've gone over all equipment with them. I found out how long it actually took to get a salt truck, which we need, which is just about a year. So they may not even have it by this season. There is a backhoe problem and something else, the other one is coming in and they're actually just put together with strings. I mean, it's, and wires and hydraulic systems are going bad. That is why I am going to be voting for these because now that I've seen the equipment, got the repairs of their equipment and how much it's going to cost, and all the maintenance records on that I did not have available at budget time, that is why I will be voting in favor of this bill.
I'm going to echo what Ms. Pagano stated. What has happened in this last six months was I personally went down and much like doubting Thomas, stuck my fingers in Jesus's side. The trucks that we have was prepared, being prepared to be cycled out needs to be cycled out. I actually went to a job site where they were using the backhoe and the backhoe is in such repair that you cannot have a man in the hole while the backhoe is being operated for safety reasons. So that is what's happened in my mind since the October, November meetings.
Yeah, I'd like to bring up or let the audience know that I've been a member of the operating engineers for over 30 years, born and raised around it, my whole family was. I went and looked at all the equipment, at all the shops, hoses, tires, crawled through it, had oil drip on me, hydraulic drip on me, went through this stuff that I've run for a living. There's a lot of things that are unsafe about it. There's a lot of factors. There's a one that's down in the parks department that is a 1975 backhoe that needs to be put out of commission, that needs to be traded off probably to the scrap pile because we won't be able to use it for a trade-in because it is so old and dangerous. That is one of the machines. All the other machines I went through, I looked through the maintenance records on them. I have went through head to toe on every one of those pieces of equipment and I'm telling you right now, they should have been replaced by now. The way I understand it, if we order some new equipment now, we are still going to be waiting some time before we get that. There's some pieces of equipment that does not need to be in service out there with the city employees, hoping that it don't swing over and whack them in the head because the controls are shot because the machines are shot. It's time for some of this equipment to be replaced. It's been well maintained. I mean, it's a big, big plus. That's how you make longevity happen with your heavy equipment. Hats off to the mechanic, I couldn't even tell you his name down there. But I'll tell you what, the guy has did a fantastic job with making that equipment last this long, but it needs to be replaced before someone gets hurt. Thanks.
Mr. Shildroff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Politics is a game of compromise. This original list that we got at our budget hearings included two more, two other vehicles that are not on this list. So in my opinion, the mayor compromised somewhat and I'm one for compromising. And I too took a tour of the city garage and talked to the mechanic and Gary Meyer, the street department director, and looked at some of the, all of this pieces of equipment. So I have no problem supporting this now because of the information I've been given and because of the fact that this administration has compromised and taken two other vehicles out of this original list. Thank you.
Mr. Henke.
Voted down last time for whatever reason, so I cannot speak for that. But I will speak, I did go down and look at the equipment myself and while the council, I feel certain is going to have a different outcome this time. It has nothing to do with politics, how this vote is taken. What it has to do is the need for the equipment. I see the need for equipment. I saw it firsthand as many of us did. So like I said, I cannot attest, I can't speak for the prior vote on this city council, but I can speak that my vote will be for the equipment and not a political vote for equipment that is needed by the city. Thank you.
Clerk, please take the final vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano? Schmidt?
The motion passes. Amended bill 9004 now becomes ordinance 8052.
Thank you.
Bill 9005, Mr. Lee moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor? Aye.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $60,000 from account number 4839, ice and snow removal to account number 4810, salaries for overtime for the public works department.
Mr. Henke moves for a third file reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Before the final vote is taken, is there, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $60,000 from account number 4839, ice and snow removal to account number 4810, salaries for overtime in the public works department.
Prior to the final vote being taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano? Schmidt?
Yes.
Bill 9005 passes and becomes ordinance 8053. Bill 9006, Mr. Henke makes a motion for a second reading. I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $10,000 from account number 4839, ice and snow removal to account number 4827 gasoline for additional gasoline expenses for the public works department.
Mr. Shildroff moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Discussion?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $10,000 from account number 4839, ice and snow removal to account number 4827 gasoline for additional gasoline expenses for the public works department.
Before the final vote is taken on this issue, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano? Schmidt?
Bill number 9006 passes and becomes ordinance number 8054. Item number nine, new business, board appointments. Item number B, 9B, request. Item, from Ward number four, request to transfer a special use permit number 757 from Sujit Inc., DBA Patterson Phillips 66 to Sadia LLC, DBA Patterson Phillips 66 for the operation of a filling station located at 2885 Patterson. Mr. Caputa. Mr. Caputa, you want to speak on it, Mr. Caputa? Are you?
Yes, 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 moved and approved.
Mr. Caputa moves to approve, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. All in favor? Aye. Next request, request for a beer and wine liquor license for Sadia LLC, DBA Patterson Phillips 66 for the property located at 2885 Patterson Road. Mr. Caputa again moves to accept this request, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor? I need a roll call vote on this, please.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano? Schmidt?
Bills for first reading, bill number 9007.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit number, transfer of special use permit number 7757 from Sujit Incorporated, DBA Patterson Phillips 66 to Sadia LLC, DBA Patterson Phillips 66 for the operation of a filling station located at 2885 Patterson Road.
Mr. Caputa moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 7757 from Sujit Incorporated, DBA Patterson Phillips 66 to Sadia LLC, DBA Patterson Phillips 66 for the operation of a filling station located at 2885 Patterson Road.
Mr. Caputa moves for a third reading, seconded by myself. All in favor?
Roll call.
A roll call vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano? Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 7757 from Sujit Incorporated, DBA Patterson Phillips 66 to Sadia LLC, DBA Patterson Phillips 66 for the operation of a filling station located at 2885 Patterson Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on this bill? Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name's Mark Bell and I live at 768 Sharpton Road. Earlier this evening in regards to this particular item, you also approved for a beer and wine permit. What I'm asking is, is what would be the sign ordinance? I'm all in favor of this 66 going in that corner.
But sign ordinances are something that's very important that especially when you're advertising liquor, especially on the main thoroughfare like Patterson Road. Tonight, as an example, Quick Trip on Lindbergh has a big sign right out in the front in the right of way, advertising Miller Lite on sale. And I noticed that this evening while it was pouring down rain. And I know we have a sign ordinance. Also, they have a sign, big sign attached to the light standard that's right on the front of Lindbergh. So I beg of you, if you're going to have an ordinance on signs, please follow through with it. That's all I ask, but check it out. Thank you very much.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane. Back in April, or early March, or late March, I was, this came up at a public hearing about this gas station opening up and I had made a request. I had practically begged that they don't issue a liquor license to this gas station because there's already that convenience store right there next to this other one. store right there next to this other one, and I don't know how the city, how they, if they want to just have nothing but liquor stores in this town, but that man has had his liquor store there for seven years or so, and when I was running for city council in Ward Four, it was very important to me that we didn't start running other people out of business in Florissant. So I had asked to please don't issue a liquor license, and on the same note, Mr. Caputa stated that he would, he did not agree, he did not agree with them having a liquor license also, that he agreed with me. And yet today, here we are, he brought up this fact that he wants the liquor license passed, he wants this passed on three readings, and he wants this to get through now. I don't know what the deal is, but I'm going to check it out, I'm going to measure and find out how many hundreds of feet it is, that store is, from the convenience store, and also from coal trains. I just don't believe that, I think that when you make promises and then you turn them on and break them, that's not the way you, that's not good politics. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Mr. Caputa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. O'Donnell, this is the wrong area, this is the gas station on Patterson and Wehop, not the one on Patterson and Humes. This is just a special use transfer permit, so you have the wrong location. But thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Clerk, please poll the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bill number 9007 passes and becomes ordinance number 8055. Bill number 9008.
Ordinance to rezone for SNH Foods, DBA Culvers, from a R4 zoning district to a B5 planned commercial district to allow for construction of a new sit-down, carry-out, and drive-through restaurant located at 955 North Highway 67.
Bill number 9009.
Ordinance to repeal, ordinance numbers 7753, 7754, 7768, 7777, 7958, 8013, and 8015, and all ordinances in conflict therewith pertaining to wage range and job classification for full-time employees and enacting in lieu thereof a new ordinance relating to the same subject and containing effective date clause.
9010, bill 9010.
Ordinance authorizing appropriations in the sum of $90,930 from general revenue fund to various accounts to provide funding for a new pay plan.
Bill number 9011.
Ordinance authorizing appropriations in the sum of $5,100 from park improvement fund to various accounts to provide funding for the new pay plan.
Bill 9012.
Ordinance amending revenue, account number 01434900, grants and reimbursements in the amount of $5,000, and appropriating the sum of $5,000 to budget account number 0154934010, communication services for grant received from Missouri Blueprint Coalition to purchase new software for the police department.
Mr. Lee makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance amending revenue, account number 01434900, grants and reimbursements in the account of five, in the amount of $5,000 from appropriating fund of $5,000 to budget account number 0154934010, communication services for the grant received from Missouri Blueprint Coalition to purchase new software for the police department.
Mr. Lee moves for a third, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance amending revenue, account number 01434900, grants and reimbursements in the account of five, in the amount of $5,000 from appropriating fund of $5,000 to budget account number 0154934010, communication services for the grant received from Missouri Blueprint Coalition to purchase new software for the police department.
Before a final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bill number 9012 passes and becomes ordinance 8056.
And the mayor thanks you. Council announcements. Ms. Pagano.
I would like to thank all the residents who came to the Ward BBQ, although Mother Nature did not cooperate with us, the city employees and the council did, and we ended up moving it to the ice rink, and it was a great night, we had around 300 people, but, you know, it was a lot of fun. So thank you all for coming.
Mr. Henke.
Yes, I would like to invite everyone here to this Wednesday night out. Corte's on St. Francis is sponsoring it. There'll be live music and beer and wine, cash bar provided by Henke's. It's a fun evening to wander around Old Town and just have a nice relaxing evening, but I think more importantly, I would invite all of you to come and help my wife Barbara and I celebrate our wedding anniversary that night. We'll be there.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to welcome Firehouse Subs to Florissant. They had their soft opening over the weekend, I had lunch there last Friday, and it was very good, and I wish them all the luck in the world. I would also like to thank Mr. Todd Schmidt and his staff, Ms. Pagano, Mr. Mark Schmidt, Mr. Egan, Mr. Lee, my wife, and all their spouses, for the work they did to make our Ward picnic a really good success. It was a really good idea moving the event to the ice rink, I don't know who thought of that, but it was a really good idea, and we had a great turnout, and I want to thank everybody for being there. We still have openings in the 21st Annual Friends of Betty Shildroth Golf Tournament on July 13th at the Golf Club of Florissant. This event benefits the hospice unit at Mercy Hospital, where my mom got some great care, and if anybody's interested in getting involved or buying a hole sponsor or making a donation, you can call me at 314-839-2927. Thank you.
Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to announce that the New Life Baptist Church is going to be having a barbecue this Friday and Saturday on the corner of Malamphie and Shackelford to help their mission groups, so they're going to be having meat from Kenricks, so if you're interested in some good barbecue, it'll be Friday from 11:00 to 6:00, and Saturday from 10:00 to 5:00.
Mr. Jones.
Yes, I'd like to bring up, I know everybody that's watching our cable vision tonight knows the channel, but we need to pass it on about U-verse, we're on Channel 99, and we're on 992 with our cable network. We need to pass it along to neighbors, friends, and get that out there so everybody can see what's happening in the city of Florissant. It shows everybody that we're moving in the right direction, that some people don't have to come up here and sit in the audience if they ain't got time for work or other activities they're doing with their kids, but...
Very good, and this Saturday, June 28th, at the Knights of Columbus grounds, it seems like there's always something happening at the Knights' grounds. The Florissant Fraternal Fires BBQ competition will be held there this Saturday, and one of the sub-competitions they will be having is a first responder competition. I will be on the Maryland Heights team, and we hope to unseat the Florissant PD team, and there are several other teams involved, including the Hayeswood Police and the Florissant Valley Fire Protection District, and hopefully, when we come back in two weeks, we'll have a trophy sitting here in front of me on the dais. Mr. Mayor.
That trophy's going to have the city of Florissant on it, Mr. Egan. Hope that everyone saw in the Post Dispatch over the weekend, we got mentioned three times. I'd like to congratulate Carol O'Mara, she did a wonderful job in talking with the reporters about the cash that we are giving to folks, or lending to people, forgivable loans, $6,000 to buy homes in the city of Florissant. We had about a half a page article about that with a lovely picture of Carol O'Mara on the page, on page B5 of the business section of the Post Dispatch on Friday, June 20th, and then on Sunday, June 22nd, the Fiesta in Florissant was mentioned on the community section, on the front page of the community section, and then also on Sunday, in St. Louis Today, in the digest, it mentioned the Florissant Anniversary Events. Florissant Anniversary Events, on Wednesday evening, we'll have a block party in front of the old city hall, the old city halls, both city halls, in 600 block of St. Francis Street, and then right across the street from there is Corte's Framing, and Old Town Partners will be having their Wednesday Night Out, the first Wednesday Night Out of the summer. They'll have one in July, August, and September, but this one's going to help us celebrate our 75th anniversary of A Place Called Florissant, and I hope everyone got their A Place Called Florissant magazine. And in addition to the 36 pages that was delivered to your home, we're also going to have two more pages in the focus, or actually, one big page in the focus, the equivalent of two pages of this, and it's going to talk about the judges from 1939 forward, and also the city clerks. It's going to talk about A Place Called Florissant, Colorado, and talk a little bit about some other leaders like Clint Zweifel and Mike O'Mara. So please join us on Wednesday, and then on Thursday, we're back to business, and we're going to have a town hall meeting at 2:00 PM and another one at 7:00 PM at the Egan Center. I've invited all the council members to join me, all of our department heads will be there, and we'll be there to talk about what the city's doing today in preparation for the next 75 years of progress in the Florissant Valley. And also in honor of this 75th birthday celebration, we're going to have a disc golf tournament on Saturday, June 28th, it's a 27-hole event, 27-hole tournament, individual tournament. It's going to have several different skill levels, open, advanced, intermediate, recreational, juniors and women who can compete at our disc golf course, which we really are happy with, it's really helped us to take back Donegan Park. This summer, we have another, as if we didn't have enough fun, we have the Wednesday Night Outs, and we have the concert series that I'm going to talk about, I'm going to talk about that now, and I'll finish with this other thing. But we're going to start July 4th with the North Winds Concert Band, and then on Saturday nights throughout the summer, July 12th Fan Fair, July 19th Ground Flow Fusion, July 26th Bob Cuban, August 2nd Butch Wax and the Hollywoods, August 9th Billy Peake Band, August 16th Smash Band, and all those are Saturdays except for 4th of July. Then the last one in the summer is on a Sunday, the Boeing Employees Concert Band is Sunday, August 24th, and then the last concert will be at the Fall Festival, Sunday, October 12th, and that'll be the Ralph Butler Band. And that's your summer concert series, I'd like to thank Gary Gatos for arranging for all those venues. And then, but as if we didn't have enough fun with all the Wednesday Night Outs and the concerts in the park and all that stuff, we have a team of pastry chefs that are competing in the national show on TLC, it's the Next Great Baker Series, it's one of those reality shows, and we have a team from Florissant, and we have one as Al Watson, he's the manager and cake decorator at Wedding Wonderland Cake Shop in Ward Five up there by Yaxx, and the other one is Leah Weber, and she's also at Wedding Wonderland, but she's also with Handel's, and she also has her own company, and so those two individuals are going to be competing, and they're going to have a show watch every Tuesday evening at two locations, so there's going to have one at Yaccavelli's for the Wedding Wonderland fans, and another one at Handel's for the Handel's fans, so there's going to be two things to do, two places to go every Tuesday night to watch this national show, and good luck to the team from Florissant. Thank you.
The next council meeting will be held July 14th, 2014. Mr. Schmidt moves to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Henke. All in favor?
Aye.
The council stands adjourned.